Okay, I'd like to open the office 12th, the planning board meeting. Uh, we are being recorded or sent out live or both. Um, first up, our administrative questions. And the first one is infrastructure oversight committee, planning board member reappoints. Daley and Sors, or, or work currently?
Daley, or Bob is already appointed to the committee for the planning board. What happened in January, Jim was explaining to myself and Manny earlier today, that the select board made the decision to change a planning board position to an open seat. And so you, the planning board could request, and Manny has requested that he is the planning, uh, another planning board appointee to the infrastructure oversight committee. Um, so the planning board can recommend to the select board that Manny is appointed um, as an at-large member, or the board can also request that the at-large seat is converted back to a planning board seat, so there would be two dedicated planning board seats on the committee, um, and that Manny could be the, the board's appointee for that position.
So in January, they took away one of our seats and made it a general seat?
Yeah, because Manny was already on the select board and the, the planning board at the time, um, and, but now that his select board term is coming to an end, and I understand that he's not rerunning, there will be, uh, one fewer planning board member on the committee at the, at this time, so.
And all of them isn't a plan, was?
Yeah, he has four more years on this part.
About four, four. Okay, so what is the, uh, the thought of the board? So we have Manny who wants to be reappointed as the planning board member?
Yes. They put, so with my absence, they put Jake in, which I think is a good fit, probably better than, than the at-large. That's, that's open still, so we already have an at-large.
And you could put in two separate requests here, that Manny is just pointed, appointed more generally, and also to convert that seat to a planning board seat.
So Mr. Chair, I attempt a motion based on the planner's summary of this. I, I would move that we communicate with the select board, uh, that we would like to see Manny Sors on the infrastructure oversight committee. Um, our preference would be to have it, uh, as a reestablished planning board seat, but failing that as an at-large member.
I would certainly second that, and Manny has been deeply involved in, in the infrastructure of the North End, and not in a casual way, but actually using his, uh, construction skills to go out and do inspections and things of that nature, so he's certainly been an active member of the committee.
Okay, is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, that's all. Okay, uh, next is... Well, I have two different agendas here.
Go by the paper one.
Okay.
Go by which one?
The paper one. Okay, uh, next would be Clean Energy Collective, file number 15-006SP-CD-S. Close out and release consultant review fees.
Oh, yeah, um, so I had given a follow-up report, um, a couple weeks ago, a couple board meetings ago, where we went over some of the closed-out projects, so, um, we have three projects here that just need, um, your motion to approve or release of the consultant review fees, the first one being Clean Energy Collective, so.
So where, where is the Clean Energy Collective, just to refresh my memory, where is that?
Um, Old County Road, okay, yeah.
That's old.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a solar energy facility from 2015.
Yeah, okay, alright, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that, uh, to release, um, uh, to close out Clean Energy Collective, release the consultant review fees of $2,170 plus interest.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is a similar one for CVE North America, file number 18-003SPA-LIB-SP-S. Close out and release consultant review fees.
This, this one is on Two-Telway.
Okay.
You want a motion, Mr. Chair? Uh, similar to last time, I would move that we, uh, close out the CVE North America project and release consultant fees of $850.82 plus interest.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is Rita Lane Extension, uh, file number 19-001C, close out and release consultant review fees.
This is a roadway that was accepted at town meeting last year, so our consulting engineer and highway department have signed off on the construction and the other necessary improvements for the roadway, and so we're all set to release the consultant review fees at this time.
I, I don't think there's a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close out the Rita Lane Extension project and release the consultant review fees of $1,549.65 plus interest.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next are, uh, discussion topics, uh, and first is Hicks Bridge Landing update.
My name is Jeff Bull, I'm chairperson of the Westport Landing Commission. Uh, we are looking to you as, since you are the holder of the grant, for approval of the plan that is before you, so we can move forward with the Board of Selectmen, get their approval, and then start the final permitting process for Conservation Commission, safety, waterways, and then start fundraising. Uh, we've been doing this for two and a half years, have been multiple iterations of this plan, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We did meet today again with GZA engineer and approved, the planning, the landing commission has approved this plan. Uh, it's important to us to move as expeditiously as possible because there are, uh, funding and grant application deadlines from some of the major sources that we're, we're looking at.
Okay, um, can everybody hear him? Uh, you're welcome to come closer and just...
I can speak louder, too.
Yeah, that would...
I don't know if the mic's working, check the mic, please.
Check the mic?
Yeah.
Checking?
No, the mic's not working.
No, it's working, it doesn't come through, they have, we've got them again in the...
Hello?
Okay.
It should be coming on again.
That's just feeding you too.
How about now?
Yes, just...
I'll speak louder.
Please. Could you start again, so that everybody could hear what you're going to say?
I think I can remember that. My name is Jeff Bull, I'm chairperson of the Westport Landing Commission, we've been working on this design for more than three years now, this is the fourth iteration of the design, uh, that's been reviewed by the safety officer of the police and extensively by the landing commission, and has been open to the public, uh, and we are looking for your approval because the grant is funded through the planning board, and that you may have particular concerns and expertise that you can help us with. Uh, we did meet today, linked and answered with the GZA engineer who designed, was our design consultant, and he was able to field any questions that people had, including the new harbor master, uh, so we are again looking for approval by this board, so we can then move to the select board for their approval, so that then we can start the permitting process and the fundraising process, anticipating that this could take two to five years to get permitted, funded, and may never get built, and because the expense of this does jump five to 10% a year, because marine construction costs are jumping dramatically, uh, and we're, we, and our expectation is to build, to build it with exterior funds, not with town funds.
These plans should be familiar to the planning board, too, if you see the, the plan, the set date, it's March 10th, 2025, so we did bring this before the planning board. Uh, I don't think you all made an, an motion to endorse it, but you gave myself and Jeff Bull the okay to continue on with this iteration of the plan. The reason why there's been a delay in moving forward with subsequent phases of this project is because a select board member, Jake McGuigan, wanted to make a second attempt at negotiating with the Nookwich Oak Hall Association to try to work out an agreement for that second point of access onto the landing. That was not successful, and so I don't think anything, there will be any, uh, at least as far as things stand right now, I don't, I don't think there are going to be any more conversations around that, and so we would like to move forward with permitting on what we've already designed, um, which was brought before the board at, back in March. Um, it does close off the entrance into the Nookwich Oak Hall Association property.
Okay, and you have re-reviewed it yourself?
Mm-hmm.
Is it basically the same plan we saw in March?
It's the same exact plan, we, yep.
Anybody have any?
I have a couple of questions. Um, I'm looking at, Jeff, at this plan here.
Yeah, I agree with that one.
Yeah, and, uh, one question I have is, uh, the green, uh, float and the gray float next to it, what, what is the difference? Be, what, what's different about the green one from the gray one, just to the north?
The gray one was drawn by JZ Engineering, and for some reason he did not extend the full length of the floats.
So...
So we are going to have the full length of the floats, and I drew that in so that you would know that's how long the north-south extension is, that is four feet longer than the current north-south extension.
Oh, good.
And it is 300 feet further away from the channel going under the bridge, so it's dramatically safer, and that orientation also allows easy access on both sides of the float, where the previous orientation didn't work, and then the big benefit of this design is that the, the ramps leading down to the floats are right next to the, are on top of the ramp, where our current design, the, the floats are separated from the boat ramp, so that when you put your boat in, you then have to get over to the dock, run around through the beach, potentially at high water, in the water, to then get your truck out of the Atlantic, so this will facilitate much more rapid launching and retrieval of boats, especially in emergency situations.
So I do my water quality testing for the Waterfield Alliance and the Coalition for Boat and Bay on the Stock, and so I'm down there frequently, and I, I wonder if you might on the end of that green one, uh, install a little bench, because it's really hard on my knees to bend over, no, that's, I'm not sure it's... But, uh, I do have, uh, thank you for saying it's, it's four feet longer, because in the morning when I test, there's a lot of activity with the Dharma Voyage, not to mention people watching their boats, so it's, uh, uh, it's busy. The question I have is I also noticed when I'm there testing, uh, people rowing shells who don't land at the dock, they kind of beach their shell in the grass, in the marsh, uh, and because shells require docks that are very low to the water. So with this ADA parking, is there still going to be a way that people coming in with shells can beach their shells as they take the oars off and put them on their cars?
The problem existing currently, if you're going to be bringing any kind of boat in on the south side of the ramp, is that you are at that point in beach grass.
Yeah, that's where they land it.
It's not good.
Okay.
On the other side, there will now be very open access to a beach.
So they can land on the beach, not on the grass?
Yes.
On the north side instead of the south side?
Right, and I also point out, given your other question, there will be access to boats going in and out on both sides of this boat ramp, there's, there's floating docks on boats connected to the ramp, so depending on the tide, one person can be going in on one side while the other person's going out on the other side.
And there are cleats on the, on all of these docks, so people can tie their boats temporarily?
Lots of cleats.
Lots of cleats.
Matter of fact, the floating docks to the public are arriving on Friday, but will be put in the same orientation as the existing ones until we build this, so for the public who's expecting to use Hicks Bridge Landing on Friday, it's going to be challenging, there's a lot of construction going on that day, sorry that's an offset.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the recommendation.
Okay, I, I just have one question for you. I also have a rowing shell, and I have my own float, which is very low to the water specifically because of that. Is it possible that any of these floats, or a float, could be lower so that we can get it in and out of the shell?
I spent about three months researching floats, looking at that possibility, uh, and the general consensus and of the over 300 people who row from there in larger boats was to go with standardized, standard height floats, that, uh, and the reality of stepping down from a float that's 17 inches above the water to a float that's four inches above the water, which is what rowing shell needs, is a big step and would compromise the ADA reality of this, so I, I appreciate that, you know, your interest in that, I think that it's, it's something currently that is not a possibility, I suppose, you know, could be considered in the future, perhaps off the northern extension, but, uh, and we also just don't have the money for it, and you potentially run into groundout issues, as you may be aware, that floats have to stay 30 inches above the bottom at low tide, and that becomes a problem with a low-lying shell-type float.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, you, uh, you know that I've, uh, worked on this existing ramp a lot, and, um, getting, uh, the Dharma Voyage gigs in and out of this water, and, uh, the, it's a, it's a, an interesting problem when you're, you know, launching a 30-foot, 32-foot boat in there, um, so this is definitely needed, a significant improvement, and particularly the ability and the, the self-facing L, you know, having the ability to tie up on both sides of that would make a, a big difference. Uh, there, there are times when, when this is a particularly busy area, um, so this is, so this is, would be a definite improvement over what we have now.
I got a couple of questions.
Alright.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, for Jeff, so, um, well, first of all, is there going to be any restriction, I suppose you can't put a restriction, or can you, on the size of boats that can access this area and be launched?
Uh, I, my understanding of Commonwealth law is that anyone can put a boat in the water anywhere, but they cannot necessarily park there, so, again, the town can control parking, it is unlikely that someone would come with some huge boat, try to put it in there, uh, we are looking at the possibility of isolating the six parking places that are in the northeast corner, under the word Swale, as double axle trailers, exactly for that reason, uh, and as we go through the permitting process and the safety process, uh, we'll be considering that, and it will be up to the Board of Selectmen as far as, um, you know, exactly how that gets oriented. We are opening up six to eight parking places for vehicles on the west side of Hicks Bridge, because there is some loss of parking with this plan compared to the double exit plan, uh, and we will be opening that up, hopefully before the end of this summer, uh, and that will increase vehicle parking.
Is it the northwest end of Hicks Bridge?
Correct, that grassy area belongs to the town and has never been used by the town, and we've gotten permission from the safety officer to go ahead and create some parking in there.
Yeah, well, the reason I ask was also because the ramp that you have proposed is 24 feet wide, and, uh, so, I mean, I, I guess smaller boats can, as you mentioned, some can be launched and some can be simultaneously being pulled, but it's tight, isn't it? Is your, is your thought that it's basically one boat at a time, either going in, coming out?
This design, according to our engineer, is one boat in the laneway at a time, but apparently this is the now approved width for a laneway, given that some people are better than other people at backing down straight.
Yeah, I mean, the, uh, the town landing at, uh, at Back Eddie is, that, that ramp is, of course, you know, you can go, you can have two boats, it's 40, it's 40 feet wide, so.
Right, but this is a...
This is clearly for one boat at a time.
One at a time, but because there is the tie-up process on both sides of this, the next person won't have to wait as long.
Right, um, and then, uh, the paved crosswalk and the sidewalks, can you explain? I mean, I, I guess this is some code issue or something, what is, what's the purpose of it?
It's an ADA requirement, and we will be going after ADA money, and handicap people have the right to use the water, uh, the entire parking lot will be paved.
Okay.
Uh, and so as to direct stormwater into rain gardens on either side of it, and, uh, because the current impact of a gravel parking lot that just floods into the river every time, uh, because gravel parking lots are only, are 95% impervious, so all that spilled oil, gasoline, et cetera, is ending up in the river, and actually, on the south side of, uh, consistent boat ramp, there's actually a sandbar now, because the parking lot's been washing into the river every day, at time it rains, uh, so that's one of the things we hope to stop by redirecting the water north and into treatment before it enters.
Yeah, so, I, this is probably silly question, but I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand the purpose of a, of a paved, of a crosswalk with striping.
Oh, the yellow striping?
Yeah.
There will be a congestion problem here, that yellow striping means cars can't stop there, because if a car stops there and he's not available immediately to move his trailer, and then someone else enters, and enters the landing, it's coming down, and someone comes behind them, suddenly traffic is backing up on the Hicks Bridge road.
Okay.
So the hope is that people will not stop within, I mean, you're not supposed to stop in any yellow stripe area.
Right, well, that makes sense, um, so last two, um, is there any, I think in an earlier version I saw there was going to be lighting.
I am not aware that we've ever planned on lighting, people have asked about lighting in the past, we are not planning on lighting.
You didn't have that, if, like, a year ago, two years ago? No, alright, well, I think so.
Not in my 76-year-old brain, but...
I don't think so either.
And then are you going to have a handy house or something?
There will always be a handicap portage on there, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have, uh, one more question, and that is, uh, I, I guess the question is, can cars park in, in, uh, spots that are identified for trailers, and the reason I ask that is the plan shows 32 trailer spaces and, uh, five cars plus two handicap, and I usually see, when I'm down there, a reverse ratio, many more cars than trailers, and so that'll be okay as long as cars can take up, uh, I've never seen 32 trailers down there, but maybe I'm just not there at the optimal mile.
On a busy, sunny weekend in July, every trailer stock will be full, uh, the Board of Selectmen will need to figure out what to do about vehicular parking, uh, the, uh, there's, there's various options, uh, I mean, certainly that's part of why we're opening up parking on the other side of the bridge, uh, and they will need to decide, I mean, personally, if someone is showing up with five of their boatmates to go out in one boat at the same time, I would ask those five people to use, or total of six people, to use three parking spaces and park each other in, uh, and that's, it's conceivable that the select board will push people and sign this for that purpose, uh, it's, but again, that will be something that happens out of goodwill, it's going to be difficult to enforce, uh, but that will be something down the road that the select board will be figuring out.
Uh, but say a person in a car with two shells on top, having them park on the other side of Hicks Bridge, and walk with their shells over their head across the bridge to get there, doesn't, that's not going to happen.
No, but they could pull in, as many people currently do, unload, and then if they need to, because all the parking here is full, go park somewhere else, that, I, I do that regularly myself at, in Gooseberry and various places, I mean, the reality is you drop your craft off and then you go park.
Yeah, thank you. You want a motion, please? I would move that we endorse, uh, is that what you're looking for, endorsement or approval?
I think approval.
I, I would, uh, move that we approve the plan submitted by the landing commission on the Hicks Bridge.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lot of work in that, Jeff, thanks.
I...
Okay, uh, next up, we have a lot of discussion items, and seeing a lot of people in the audience, I don't know what you're all here for, I can change the order of these. Can I have a show of hands, who's here for the high school reuse? Route 88 Sullivan Drive? Marquette Drive? Mellow's Way?
Two.
Three? Uh, 493 American Legion Highway? Zoning enforcement at 138 Sodom Road? And high school reuse again, so, uh, I think we'll do...
High school first?
No, that's going to take a while, so, what was... No, that's gonna take a while, so, what was the other one with a lot of people? Marquette?
Mellow's Lane.
Mellow's Lane, okay. Let's, let's take Mellow's Lane out of sequence.
Good evening to the board, Attorney Mac Long here on behalf of the owner. Also listed as the applicant under this, I'll let Michael pull it up first. If you also have the, um, GIS overview that you put in your report, I think that would be a little more helpful too. Just to show, um, I'll get started talking about it though. For the board members that are aware or aren't aware of Mellow's Way, Mellow's Way is located west of Lighthouse Lane, literally directly west of it on 177. We're here, this has been a longstanding, um, we've been going back and forth with the town for over three years now to determine the buildability of these lots, most specifically my client, Mr. Nardelli, and the buildability of his lot located on Mellow's Way. This originally started back in 2022 with a letter from Attorney John Williams, who stated that, you know, we, we went through and did the deep research, at that point I actually worked with John Williams, and we did the deep research all the way back and found that the way has been listed and shown for quite a while. And that was concurred by Attorney Mark Levin out of Fall River, who went even further and more extensive. I took it back to about 1900, he went one step further and went all the way back to about 1860 with references in a deed, in multiple deeds of Mellow's Way. A little brief history lesson, this way used to run all the way from 177 down to the south of Latolla Pond when they were cutting ice on the north side, and this was used to bring ice down to the southern portion of Westport back in the late 1800s. Kind of a cool little history fact, it's been around for quite some time. Right now, it services four lots essentially. Michael, would you mind backing that up just a little bit? So, we can show all the way up. So, it's these four lots here, this lot has frontage on Route 177, but this lot, this lot, and this lot, this is the subject lot here, all only have frontage on Mellow's Way. This is currently operated as a farm of sorts, we'll call it, I don't really know what else to call it other than that. It's owned by, I believe, Mr. Torres. And then directly to the north is the property owned by Ms. Carlos. You are all probably familiar with this lot. There was a proposed, not subdivision, but, um, older community that was before you. There were some trees that were cut, and you had put an enforcement order in place, I believe, Mark, I mean, Bill had put, you know, been before you for that. And, and that all kind of happened congruently. So, Attorney Levin's opinion letter was regarding the property to the north, but shared the same, you know, concept, same use of the lane. And all three attorneys, myself included, contend that this is a way that's been existent, in existence prior to zoning. We have gone back and forth with Town Council, with Ralph, with, you know, basically just going back and forth. And what landed us here now is, I believe in Michael's report, you've concurred, Jim Hartnett concurred that there's, it's clear that this has been in existence long before subdivision control came in. So, we meet that first threshold. The second threshold of that law in Massachusetts is that the Planning Board has to find that the roadway provides, or, or way provides, you know, adequate suitable grade conditions to service the use that is proposed. The proposed use for my client is a single-family house on 10 acres of land. There's a perp test that's been completed. We met with Chris Capone, I believe his email kind of highlights that. We met with Chris Capone and a wetlands expert, Steve Schmeele, on the site earlier this year to talk about the enforcement order that is currently against the property to the south that I've talked about. You can see that there are some wetlands shown on the GIS that is accurate, there are wetlands in that area. And the way kind of runs right through the middle of it. There were improvements made to the way at some point in the last few years. I'm not gonna really speak to that because I don't know much about the improvements that were made, other than the way has been improved, there's been gravel added. The discussion that we had with Chris was, you know, how do we remedy this enforcement order going forward? How could we make everybody happy? And he suggested, or requested that there would be a culvert added. And if you look at the pictures that were sent in along with his email, it shows that there are some flooding concerns on both the east and west side of Mellow's Way in heavy rainstorms. There's no culvert there currently. Furthermore, when the, you know, improvement of the way was conducted, there was no wetlands replication that occurred for the roughly 4,000 square feet that was filled in. So, the proposal here that we kind of talked with Chris about would be to replicate the wetlands on the Nardelli lot because there are quite a bit of wetlands here that kind of come across, and there is a little bit of upland here, but it's basically inaccessible and unusable for the sake of, you know, building a single-family house. So, my client is willing to do the replication prior to, you know, any building permit being pulled or anything like that. But before we go and do any of that work, we need the board to agree that this does service and serve as a public way suitable for frontage to be used for a single-family house lot. With that being said, the implications of the board agreeing and stating that they concur with us that it is suitable and could be then used as frontage for a buildable lot would then allow the lot to the north to also build a single-family house, a single-family house home. Any further subdivision would require them to come before the board, and the board would then have an opportunity at that time to say, no, it doesn't serve, you know, as a public way for four, five, six, seven months. I, off the top of my head, I think it would be, um, potential for up to six or seven lots, four may, on a true 40-foot public way all the way up. But by you guys concurring with us at this point and stating that it does serve as a suitable way for buildability sake, it would only allow for single-family houses to be built. And that would be on this property and this property. This property currently, like I said, has frontage on Route 177, and they could access from 177. So, it doesn't really implicate them. In Michael's report, you mentioned Lighthouse Lane having access to this. I don't feel that that is completely relevant in the sense that all of these lots are on a public way currently and also are incapable of being subdivided. They, they're too small, they're, you know, this has been developed and there's no more development that's gonna occur here. Furthermore, um, we perp tested this lot. It was very difficult, and it perked, but it perked for one house. So, there's no way that, you know, somebody down the line is gonna buy this lot. I mean, they could try, but there's really no way that they're gonna come in and say, oh, we're gonna put, you know, a three-lock subdivision, because it's about 10 acres. And given the wetlands and everything else, the GIS is rather conservative where the actual wetlands are a bit more. I mean, the lot is probably 40, 30 to 40% wet. So, it does serve as a nice private single-family house in that single-family house lot. It's been in my client's family since the early 80s, they've been paying taxes on it. And, uh, at this point, they're really just looking to get it approved as a buildable lot. We've been up against this for about three years. It is nice to be able to finally, you know, hopefully close this out and get the answers that we're looking for. We went back and forth with Ralph, we've talked with, you know, Jim Hartnett at this multiple times. We, uh, went back and forth with Town Council. Ultimately, we've landed here with the board, and we're here to discuss and request that the board make a determination as to the suitability for a single-family house, for the use and service of a single-family house. And at most, two single-family houses. You know, happy to answer any questions or, you know, kind of address any concerns?
Sure, so, I'm kind of familiar with ancient ways. And, uh, being an ancient way for access from the past doesn't mean that it has the requisite right-of-way or, uh, elevations or all of those things that we look at in a road. So, I'd like to turn it over to Michael. Have we looked at it from the standpoint of, would they have to do anything to this way to make it usable?
Yeah, so, one of the central questions for the board is to determine whether or not this way has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon. And so, I, the construction of the way is really where things hinge, and it's, it's very deficient in that regard to be considered the town roadway. And so, I can just go over in my report, I don't know if you all read it, but I'll go over a description of.
Please go over it, sorry.
Okay, a description of the way. So, from the intersection with Route 177, Mellow's Way crosses three properties to provide access to the subject site. The distance from 177 to the subject parcel is approximately 1,716 feet. Mellow's Way has a variable right-of-way width. The way on the submitted plan is shown to be approximately 30 feet wide. We did not receive a cross-section for the layout, um, but we're, I'm estimating that the gravel drive has a variable width of about 15 feet for the, uh, for the, for its entire width. Mellow's Way does not feature roadside drainage, does appear to be crowned, um, for sheet flow, but we don't know what those slopes are. The parcel immediately to the south of the subject site, as was mentioned earlier, features wetlands, wetlands that are within Mellow's Lane. This section of the drive, the conservation agent provided comments and photos showing that there's overwash and ponding after a rain event. Upgrades on, if, if Mellow's Way were to be upgraded at all, as was noted, that it will need to go to the Concom for permitting and to rectify a prior enforcement order for fill in the wet, the wetlands, and there would be wetlands replication associated with that. And then the intersection of Mellow's Way with Route 177 is at approximately a 90-degree angle. We don't know whether or not the turn radies are appropriate from Mellow's Way onto 177. And there's, would probably be an issue with some of the foliage as well that would need to be cut back to improve site distances. So.
Is that, is that vegetation on their property or on the roadway?
It would be on, it could, I, I don't know if it's in the road layout, but it would not be on the, the subject site, because, yeah.
And is there a road layout that, I mean, does it show on the GIS maps that there's a space between the lots on the left and the Lighthouse Lane lots?
It does, but that's just, it's an approximation of what the road, the actual layout is. It's obviously not a substitute for a survey. So, in reference to the town's zoning bylaws as well as the subdivision standards, there are a couple of things regarding the width grades and construction of Mellow's Way that I wanna talk about. So, um, I think we need to assess Mellow's Way, Mellow's Way ability to convey vehicular travel in accordance with residential street standards and not the rural residential lane standards, which is a higher standard for review, but the, the drive would be providing frontage to, um, all of the lots leading up from American, that are addressed to American Legion Highway. It'd also be providing frontage to the lots, um, on Lighthouse Lane. So, my primary concern wasn't about those lots getting access from the, from the laneway, but that it, because they have frontage on that, they would have frontage on that road, it would kick a higher standard for, um, streets, that, uh, they would kick up to the residential street standards. And so, and that's because a rural residential lane may provide frontage to normal, no more than four lots. And so, when you're.
So, the, so the question is, the Lighthouse Lane lots that front on this or back on it, would have the legal right, you're a lawyer, to, to use that lane?
Well, I mean, in order to access any of these, especially these southern lots here, it's all wetlands. And a lot of these, I'm relatively familiar with the area, I've been down the laneway many times. It's all their backyard, it's all grown in, it's protected, it offers them, you know, coverage from, you know, passing by. And I think that when, um, that northern parcel came before you, there was a lot of concern from, uh, the people at Lighthouse Lane that they didn't wanna see a lot going on back there because it is their backyard. And so, while I understand the concern, I, I don't necessarily think it's fair. Michael, if you could just back up again so we can see the whole, you know, lots. You know, this lot and this lot specifically are the two that are not developed. This lot is developed and is used, they run trucks and machines and everything up and down there all the time. So, the usefulness of the roadway is decent from 177 all the way up to here. The issue starts right at the wetlands. And as I mentioned to the board, you know, my client is willing to do the replication and willing to, you know, work with conservation to come up with a plan and make minor improvements to make this suitable to service to single-family houses. Because ultimately, you know, by us doing that, it would render this lot also part of it. But building on that, these lots have been in existence for quite some time. This subdivision occurred, and I don't think it's fair to burden these landowners by saying, oh, Lighthouse Lane will now have access to this, when they've been paying taxes, they've been using, you know, their land. And prior to this, these were farmland, you know, up until the late 90s, my client's family was farming that. I don't know if you're familiar with the Nardelli farm on Sanford Road, he grows corn. He was using this as a secondary cornfield. But, you know, you get older and you do less, so they kind of let it go and it overgrew. But, you know, the plan here is just to create a single-family house lot. And as I mentioned before, you know, while I understand the concern and I do understand where you're coming from in terms of the, you know, higher roadway standard, it really wouldn't be servicing more than four lots. You know, because of the fact that you have one, two, three, four, those are the only lots that would realistically be using this. If someone on Lighthouse Lane wanted to add, you know, a little cutoff into their backyard, sure, is that possible? I mean, I guess, but this wetland, just like the other one, is, is very conservative and likely carries up a bit further along the back because of the crown. That does exist, and water exists sun-ide of sight.
So, our, our rural residential lane bylaw, I believe, specifies that you can't have more than four houses, no, four lots that have, that use frontage on the, on the rural residential lane. It doesn't say anything about others' actions. So, the question, the question in my mind is, have you had a discussion with the fire department?
Uh, not at this point, no.
We discussed with the fire department this afternoon, and the fire department recommended that this way would be upgraded to town standards before any additional development is accommodated on Mellow's Way. We also discussed with the highway department this morning, and they also similarly echoed concerns from, um, Chris Capone and the concert, Concom, um, that the road, that the way does not have adequate drainage to convey additional vehicular traffic.
Okay. My concern is that if you make Mellow's Lane, I agree with everything on the drainage. My concern is if you make Mellow's Lane wider, then two things happen. One, people increase their speed, and that doesn't benefit anybody. And two, there is no reason for someone on Lighthouse Lane to build a secondary driveway to Mellow's Lane. You only do that if you're gonna save time. And both of them are straight shots to 177. But if you make Mellow's Lane a four-lane highway, then someone might say, well, it is quicker actually for me to go down Mellow's Lane because there's less congestion, it's a wide-open street. So, I, I understand the fire chief wanting, uh, the ability to have fire trucks going in opposite directions and so on, but I'm really worried about building this road for, uh, traffic that isn't going to be there unless we widen the road. for traffic that isn't going to be there unless we widen the road.
I do concur with that, and I also would say, you know, like I mentioned, up until this point, you could drive an 18-wheeler down to here, it'd be a bumpy ride, but you could get it down there no problem. You know, between this stretch up, I do think that there is discussion. As I mentioned, it's already been improved with good-quality gravel. And definitely, the photos from Chris are predating the improvement that was made, as far as I'm aware. And that was used by Concom when they put the enforcement order to demonstrate that wetlands were filled in. And so that's why there's no issue with my client feeling like they're willing to put the, you know, wetlands replication at the culver. But again, you know, we're not talking about making this into a massive subdivision or being used for more than two houses at this point. This is already being used currently. And if, I don't know if you want to toggle on to the theme here and show the overview, you can see that in, this is a pretty wide-open and expansive, there's multiple buildings, there's lots of trash to be set, and, you know, Chris mentioned his concerns with that. But, you know, we're not here to address that or those things. But the laneway is very open up until this point. And so the purpose of this lot is a large, ten-acre parcel, very standard in Westport, just like we have off a drift road at Main Road, all the way up and down, to create a private wooded lot, you know. And we do talk about the fire department's concerns, and we're happy to meet with, you know, the fire department and kind of try to find a happy medium here. But, you know, the likelihood that you're going to have two fire trucks passing at one time is unlikely. If there's a fire, they're driving back there, they're putting the fire out, and they're leaving. You know, and I think that that's a reasonable concern, and I think that everybody should have adequate access to get those services that they pay taxes for. But widening the way beyond the 15 feet does, you know, I think what John brought up is a good point.
So I have another question for Michael. How long is this road or this ancient way purported to be 1,100 feet?
To the subject site, it's 1,700.
1,700, yeah. And we have plenty of places in town that have developed over the years that are like that.
Right.
Long, you know, go from Horse Neck Road all the way down to the river. If you improve it to town standards, then you open up those two lots to regular development. And I don't know that anybody wants that.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it can be unless someone came in and then purchased enough. What we know is the way is net. I think there's been, we've wanted it in a couple of discussions. I think there's a lot of evidence that this is a road, a lane, that existed away that existed prior to the subdivision control law. I think that's established. I don't think it's established at all that any of the parcels on Lighthouse Way have rights in that way or anybody else has rights in that way. That's a legal question that I don't think, you know, since they have, you know, they face on a subdivision road that was approved by a subdivision, it doesn't mean that they also have rights on this way. The four lots that we're talking about only have rights on this way.
Yeah, and it is mentioned in the deeds.
If you hear me out, so. So I feel differently about developing it to town standards. First of all, if we were to require that, I don't think it's physically possible for them to do that. First of all, the right-of-way, even where we know how wide the right-of-way is, it's only 30 feet wide, and it may be narrower than that. So you can't build a 50-foot right-of-way and a 30-foot right-of-way. And that's a different question for us. The question for us really is, there are four lots that have access on this way. Could this way be developed within the 30-foot right-of-way to meet the rural standard, which allows development, allows a road to be built for four lanes? And I think the answer to that question is yes. And the applicants have the burden to do that. But for single-family use purposes, or in fact, if one of them wanted to have a farm, this is a zone, agricultural residential. If somebody wanted to have a farm here, I think, you know, they could have a farm here. And, you know, that's what the zoning allows, allows single, it's in a single-family. And I think these lots, you know, for a single-family house or, you know, something that complies with the zoning, if they were to improve the way and do the wetland filling and all of that stuff, you know, I think that's a suitable solution here. And each of those two lots that you represent, if they were to have single-family and did the wetland improvements because I think all the members of the board have walked this several times and have been on the site many times in various locations. And clearly, the water is on each, there's standing water during the wet season right up on either side of the way. So that's all your burden. But for us, could we find a way improved? And we, and I don't, and I don't want, we should be careful about not saying anything about this being in public way because we don't know that it is. We don't, I don't think it's a public way. It's not listed as a public way in a town clerk's office. And we don't have to make that finding. We have to make a finding if it is not a public way. Is it adequate, or can it be improved adequate to meet the standard for four lots? That's our duty. And I think we could, I for one feel that I could make that finding. And then the second is, it's not our job to deal with buildability of lots. I know the public audience might find that odd, but that's not our duty. Our duty is to make sure that lots have adequate access. And we have planning duties, but under the subdivision control law, it's, it is not, we're not the zoning enforcement officers. So I think if we made a decision that it's, if we made a finding that it's a way that was existed prior before the subdivision control law, that it's a private way that could be improved to meet our rural lane standards, I would be happy to make that finding.
Yeah, I agree with you up to the issue of the standards for the rural residential lane. The standards for that road are the same as the paved road except for the paving.
Right.
Which means a five-foot or 10-foot shoulder on either side and 20 feet in the middle.
Mr. Chairman.
And I think that that can't fit in this.
That can't fit, but the-
And so, you know, I would agree that they should do something with the traveled way to make it passable for themselves and for emergency vehicles. But I would consider a waiver for the 20-foot width.
I would consider such a waiver, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, it's my legal understanding that you don't need to find that it has to be 20 feet wide. You can contend as the board that the 15-foot layout is sufficient to support the proposed use of a single-family dwelling. You don't have to find that it is, you know, up to the rural residential standard. Michael made that suggestion, given his take on, you know, what we have here. But you can make a finding that the 15-foot layout, as it currently exists, with the, you know, improvements through conservation, would support the use as two single-family lots. That is within the purview of the board, to my understanding. And it doesn't necessarily need to be a waiver or anything like that. You as the board can decide, this 15-foot right-of-way does support the proposed use and leave it at that. And then we don't create any unnecessary, you know-
So in actuality, what you're doing is just using the existing laneway that's already being used for two additional house lots.
Precisely.
For one.
For one.
For one, and the request.
If, as the board finds out, then it does create the second. But I feel that that's important to mention because it is an implication that would be part of what the board decides.
Jim, there's one other issue. Excuse me. Michael points out in his report that the, we have regulations limiting a dead-end road to 1,200 feet. And as you've said, this is 1,700, over 1,700 feet. Does that, would that apply in this case?
It's existed, it's already an ancient way. We can't, I don't think we can rule on that.
Because it's existing. If that your purview would be you can't create a dead-end way of over 1,200 feet, or because this is prior existing, it's a pre-existing, non-conformity.
That's true.
Okay.
The only thing that I would consider is if you make at the end of your access someplace that a fire truck can turn around.
Absolutely, I think that would make sense with the driveway. You know, they could do enough space to clear when they do build the home to create, you know, a hammerhead-style pull-in, you know, not with full 90-foot layout, but enough that a truck could come in and turn around. And there is also that already in existence here. There's quite a bit of space where somebody could pull in and back down as well. So, you know, you do have that here, and by adding that above, that would just give another one on the lane right.
So do we need to, do we need to, or can we opine about stormwater control?
That would be one of the considerations, that whether the laneway had, excuse me, whether the laneway has sufficient construction to provide access to those lots. And stormwater would be one of those considerations.
The roadway as it currently stands does not flood. It does, however, cause issues right now because when that improvement that was made in the past few years, it blocked off the ability for the water to flow from east to west. So by adding a culver, we solved that problem. But the roadway is passable even in, you know, I mean, we've gotten some pretty crazy rainstorms recently, so, you know, we don't know, can't contend on that, but-
So the question is, it's slowly going uphill, right? Away from-
Very minimally at best, I mean-
Quite slow, I mean, it's-
Oh, yeah, not even noticeable.
Right. So does any of the water run right down the road?
No, most of it settles on the eastern, western slopes, all the way up.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I would like to, I've driven the road and I've been on it, but I would like to hear from you, the evidence at which we could make a finding. So tell us about how wide the road is.
Well, the road is documented-
The traveled way, I mean.
The traveled way is roughly laid out about 15 feet wide from Route 177 all the way to the northernmost point of the lot owned by Ms. Carlos and is laid out as such, as Michael points out in his report, with slight crowning. There's no water pooling on the laneway. The water pools on the eastern and western sides of the laneway and, in my opinion, does support vehicular access for the proposed use of a single-family dwelling.
Thank you.
So what is our motion? Is it to designate this as an ancient way or a rural way or an ancient way?
Motion could be to find that this way has, in the opinion of the board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use, as well as it is a way that was in existence prior to the town's adoption of subdivision control.
I would support that.
And that's right. I think what we can, I would move that we make a finding that it's a way that existed prior to subdivision control and that for the purpose of a single-family house, as it now sits, it has adequate construction for a single-family house.
If those motions can be merged into one, I think that's-
Yeah, I think there's, and I would accept Michael's motion. She's reading right out of the required language of the fire end we have to make.
Yeah.
Okay, straight, maybe, you got that? Okay. No, I think it's really Bob's motion, and I'll second it. Okay. Any more to start? All of those are favorable?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to the board.
So let's take up the bicycle reuse discussion. Recently, there was a report given to the select board about potential reuse, and it iterated the decision by the long-term building committee to recommend to the select board the campus-style reuse of this facility with, I think, three different uses. And the reason I had this on the agenda is that they did not consider housing in this setup. And secondly, I have been peppered by people who say, why can't we just send the COA over there and let them use part of the building now? Because it should be able to be able to do it without doing any of the upgrades for code. So I'd like to take up that part of it first. We had engineering reports about the deficiencies of the building to get up to modern codes. However, I guess because it's grandfathered with educational use, that use is still okay. But maybe Ralph, you could come up and help us understand all this?
Ralph Souza, the official of the town of Westport. The building houses more than one use. It's education use, the classrooms, assembly use, the auditoriums, other business use, the offices that ran the school, principal's office, all the offices. So it's a multi-use building. Is the town interested in keeping it that, a multi-use building? The housing would be a little bit of a stretch because you're adding more to it. So the housing would be stretched. The housing, my record is, the housing was on another portion of the property in another building on its own.
Yep.
But the building itself would need, before I could issue primics to it, I need a coach synopsis on it.
You need what, Ralph?
Coach synopsis, which is basically this. Actually, this one's the better one, but this one's expired because it was on the last edition. This was based on the ninth edition, which we're out of now, we're in the 10th edition. This one talks about the 10th edition. I would need something a little more depth than three pages for that book so that I could read through it, sit through it, question the gentleman that did- so that I could read through it, sit through it, question the gentleman that did it. And then if we come to a disagreement, then we could go to the BBRS in Boston to make the final determination that, you know, the town could do A, B, or C with that building.
Okay. Without major improvements or...
Could be not without major improvement because again, now we're in the tenth edition. Tenth edition stepped up on a lot of stuff. It's an older building. It's a fifty, it's different vintages. It's fifty, seventies. So you get different vintage buildings there that comprise that whole building. So it'd have, it'd be more likely going up to Boston for an, on a, on a, yeah.
So Council on Aging, could they do it?
Council on Aging, it, it, again, it's got to be a coach synopsis. What do they want it for? What are they, what are they doing it, what are they in it for? So it'd be a synopsis based on their use in that building. And then what, what is required for that building, for the, in their portion of that building is required, what separation is required.
So is, Ralph, is there any difference between the requirements in their existing building and the old high school for the COA?
Well, the COA, no matter what they, even if they come forward with the existing building, you're still going to do a, a, a coach synopsis on the building, on improvements. We kind of get away from stuff is because it is an existing building. There is ways of appealing things. It has to be done through Boston.
So how would that work? How, how would we...
They, they could have a synopsis sent to me and I would make my recommendations that...
So the COA would...
Get a synopsis. COA would sit down with somebody, spell out their wish list for, for any portion of that building. That person would do it, a coach synopsis, just like one of these on that portion of the building. And then they would put it to me. I would read through it, compare what the engineers telling me. More likely there'd be parts of it that they'd be going to Boston for because I can't, I can't vary stuff. Building Board of Regulations in Stanford, vary stuff.
Okay. So... So that was one issue. I'm sure the same people have been after you.
Oh, I've been, I've been asked about a lot. And it, it, in my opinion, the building should be reused. But it, there's a step, there's a process to do it. It's just not, okay, give permits, ship people in it, can't do that. I mean, I, my state inspector got wind of it. Two weeks ago, he was on the phone with me and said, "What's going on down there with that school?" And I told him, I said, "There's people I want to use it because it's a building that could be used." But you've got to know, you know what they're going to do, A, B, and C before that happens. And I, I know that.
So the steps would be somebody from Council on Aging could sit down and review it?
Sit down with me, tell me their wish list. Uh, that, that's actually sit down with an architect, engineer.
Okay.
Spell out to him what they want. He could come sit down with me. This is what they want to do. Where do we go from here? And basically, that's when it starts. It'd be only for that portion of the building.
And, uh, but the school can still run their administrative offices there because they have been...
The, the school, again, the schools could, in my, you know, there's different use groups. The offices were business use group. The auditoriums were assembly use group and the classroom for any use group. And there was some recreation in there, you know, with the gym and stuff. Gym could go either way. It could go in assembly because they had the bleachers that come out for a basketball game. So you've got three different, three, at least four different uses in there. You got a, a shop, a garage on the backside of it. So there's at least four uses in that building. Whether they want to keep them all at, in their individual use or the change use, that's what happens. Like if you took the garage and changed the use to some kind of assembly, synopsis would have to have to happen.
So is the, is the, um... Have you seen their presentation, what they want to do with it?
Well, they, I only got it today was this from the administrator, uh, the latest code analysis. Kind of vague, kind of, you know, it's not really telling me a lot. It's citing sections, but it's not telling me a lot what they want to do. You know? What, what's telling me is, is when they tell me what they want to do in the building. Then they go to the sections where first, because they might get some exemption. There may be some exceptions in there that architects, engineers point right out that were exempt due to the section such and such, paragraph B. Because there's a code section and there's the exceptions right below it.
Okay.
So Council on Aging, if they want to use the gym?
Whatever they want, no, I, I need to know what they're going to want to use.
Suppose they want to use the gym, you know, and the sandwich?
Yep.
And the cafeteria, I mean, would be required if they do that?
Same thing, a synopsis, what, what they use it for, what, what they're planning on doing out of there.
And if they want to make any changes, just use it the way it, right now. I mean, suppose they want to use, I mean, a, a, a public education?
I, I still need a synopsis, I'd say. It's not, the use is not going to change the, you know what I mean? That covers the town when it goes south over there. What did you do? How did you approve this? That's what they're going to say to me. They'll say to me, "How do you approve this?" And I don't have anything to fall back on. I approve the things on this synopsis.
Because I know what they said at the selecting, if they want to keep the existing building for adult daycare. They're going to want to do something with that and they want to use...
But they gotta, they gotta, they gotta come up with wish list. Sit down with an engineer. He can sit down with me and we can go from there.
Okay.
I think what we're trying, what we're trying to do is get the town to commit that we want to keep the building for that.
Correct.
And, you know, so that we don't, we don't just keep kicking it down the road.
Right. Because when you kick it down the road, so what happened now? You went from the ninth edition to the tenth edition. You paid for this and this is a car. And this, this is more stringent, tenth edition, more stringent.
So the, the proposal to make it into a campus entails cutting parts of the building out?
Coach synopsis, engineers telling me that they're cutting it out. Are they cutting into firewalls? Are they cutting into structure? What are, what are they doing?
I don't know.
Yeah. So they, they got to come up with a plan.
Would they have a, a sketch of a plan? They don't have a plan.
They don't have a plan, no. What they need to do is sit down with somebody like an engineer. If they want to sit down with me, name and time and place, they'll go there and we'll sit down and basically go over it.
So could you just tell us if, if all the codes had to be upgraded in that building? What that entails? I mean, is it...
It's a lot for the building. That's where the cost factor goes, goes up. But you can get, because of the age of the building, the building was built in phases over years, you could get exemptions. I believe you could get exemptions from the BBRS. Take it up to Boston and Boston would decide. Along with that, or Boston may say, "Okay, well, we'll..." Less than this, but you're going to do something else over here.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions, Ralph?
I was just going to say, I mean, isn't it pretty clear that the building, in its current condition, as you said, Ralph, does not meet the current conditions of the code? I mean, it's deficient structurally, mechanically, electrically, life safety.
Yeah.
Um, you can go right down the line. And, uh, so any proposed uses require, um, that, as you said, if that use is going to take a certain portion of the building, then that use, then that portion has to be upgraded. There's no shortcut around it.
No. I mean, again, you could get variances from, from stuff, but in the variance...
Minor things, but...
Well, in the variance, I've seen them trade stuff off. Okay, we'll give you here, but we're taking here.
Yeah, but if you wanted to go and use the, use the kitchen, I'm sure that you'd have to take out all of that equipment, put in new, new exhaust fans and...
Or one way it'd be more cost-effective to take the equipment out and replace the equipment. The kitchen would be the problem would be with the hood. What type of hood is there?
Right.
If it's not the hood that should be there for the equipment that's under it, then you wouldn't be able to use it.
Yeah, but, uh, that and the air, air exchanges, all of that, so. Anyway.
One of the other things that we were, we were talking about, so Michael, maybe you can look it up, is, is that property was donated for a school. So when we were talking about knocking it down and selling it for housing, that might not be able to be the case.
So if you, it's, to me, knocking it down is the worst thing because it's going to cost you more than you could get for the property.
Yeah, that's true.
And so it's going to cost you...
I mean, I disagree though. When you talk about the structure, the structure's good. It's got a good roof line, put in a roof line.
Some sheer...
No, there are sheer walls that are not up to code. Yeah, some of the lateral...
None of all of them are up to code, so just look at this building.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph.
You're welcome.
So the other issue that, that, um, I, I would like to have addressed, and I guess the long-term building committee didn't feel it was their job to consider housing in part of the building. And I guess that wasn't what they were tasked with doing. But, um, I have been in contact, um, not on purpose, but I just ran into somebody who does, uh, affordable housing in reused buildings in the, in the area. And they have been doing it in New Bedford and the whole area, the south coast area. And they're interested in if part of the building could be used or all of it for housing. Uh, they say that there is some new funding available, which sounds, with the current climate, unusual, but I think if there is, I think we should seriously consider. I mean, the building is a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. I can't see how we're going to use it all, no matter what we do. Um, and we do need housing. In the public hearing, uh, public meeting that they had at the old high school eight weeks ago or so, uh, many people got up and spoke and said, "We need housing." And the veterans person got up and said, "We need veterans' housing." And it hasn't been considered.
They, they did talk about that in like, in the, in the getting a partner, doing an as a campus and some of the part of that. So I think that's what they're going to be looking towards, somebody that would partner up for us to do something like that.
Because if there's money available, that takes a huge burden off the town to upgrade that building because they're going to upgrade that part. Um, and even if you give, give them a ninety-nine-year lease for a buck and do like Nokotok Village and have a nonprofit do it, I mean, you're going to take away a lot of that seventy-two million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, maybe, maybe what the Platten Board could do is to, uh, help the town create some value in these buildings. And, and what I mean by that is, is we, if we look at, at the, the current zoning, the... I don't know what's happening here, but I can get something going. The, I mean, the, the underlying zoning here is a single-family residential, resi-ag, residential agricultural district. So the only reason it's, uh, a school is that schools are a public benefit that exempt, public use that are exempt from the zoning laws. So keeping, you know, we want to have value in the structure. And I believe, as, I agree with what you had said, that the, the last thing we want to do is to spend money to decrease the value of the asset that we have. So spending several million dollars to tear it down so we have an empty lot is not what the town needs to do. But perhaps a, uh, an article for the next year's town meeting that allowed for adaptive mixed use of the existing structures. Then it would allow us to find a partner that is willing to come in. And it's clear that, as Ralph just said, that he, he might have a, finding a difficulty since it's a school that housing fits into the adaptive reuse. And I think one of the things, just as we adopted something that allowed Nokotok Village to happen, we, we could propose to the town meeting a proposal that would allow, you know, not completely housing, but the council of aging use, the recreation department, the uses that people want to do. We could put, hopefully, plain language in the zoning that allowed that to happen.
Yeah, I mean, so there's all kinds of housing that we need. Veterans is one. You could have congregate housing, uh, that is severely lacking in the south coast area.
That's right.
Um, you could have, uh, work, workforce housing, starting, starter, startup workforce housing for people who, you could just come to the town. I mean, people come here, they have to live in Fall River, where it's...
Mr. Chair?
It'll...
I had invited, um, Carol from the Veterans Affairs and also Craig from the Affordable Housing Trust to speak on behalf of those, um, parties too. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that.
But Jim, before, before they speak, just one minute. Um, I, I was encouraged to learn, and probably many of you know, that, um, the old Hawthorne Country Club out on Tucker Road was the Toll Brothers. A Fortune 500 company has an offer in, pay them to buy the property for three million dollars, develop it into affordable housing for fifty-five and over. Well, you know, I mean, because so many of these ideas that have been swimming around, many of them have a lot of merit, but they all carry enormous price tags. And so if, if we can obtain a, satisfy a need, which we have in this town, for housing, and we can have it done essentially on somebody else's dime, why wouldn't we? I mean, why wouldn't we make an attempt to, to bring in, to ask for an RFP, a request for proposal from companies like Toll Brothers? And if they're interested in Hawthorne, they're in this area. And, uh, they might, I don't know if they're aware of this building. So I just think it's an opportunity. We may be missing a good opportunity.
Yeah, I think the, the results of what we're talking about is that we should put RFPs out to find people who want to do something with the building, be it housing or maybe somebody wants to have another educational use of it.
Yeah.
I think we should. So Carol?
I am Carol Ferris, the Veterans Services Officer for the Towne Westport. And I just want to preface this by saying I am in no way an expert on the subject. I had crash course today for about a half an hour when Dea invited me to speak. Uh, so there, there is definitely a need for veteran housing. There is a need for senior housing. Uh, one of the things we talk about at all of our BSO meetings is that there is no place for senior, for veterans to go as they're getting older. Massachusetts has two veterans' homes. One is in Chelsea and one is in Holyoke. And neither one of those are realistic options for veterans in Westport because the commute for any surviving family member, especially elderly surviving spouses, is an hour and a half, two hours. Uh, and it's just not realistic. Um, the issue with any kind of housing here in Westport for veterans, like the veterans' home, is those are large campuses. They encompass medical, dental, occupational therapy, physical therapy, a lot of medical services, social work. Uh, and so I, I don't think that's something that's really realistic. And what the Executive Office of Veterans Services is looking to do more is smaller homes. And there have been several communities in Massachusetts that have done those. Um, Marshfield, Oak Bluffs, Winchenden, um, Flynn, Swanscott. I haven't spoke to the VSOs in those communities really to find out how it went. But I did speak to a gentleman, no... But I did speak to a gentleman, Noel Coolidge, who is the Housing Coordinator under the Executive Office of Veterans Services today. And he said that there, there is potential funding out there to reuse or renovate a building to make it into veteran housing. Probably wouldn't be a hundred percent veteran. It would be, you know, a veteran preference. It would not be strictly Westport residents because the funding is not solely Westport, right? So you can't, you can't just say only Westport residents can go there. And all of that stuff would be negotiated between the developer and the town if it got to that point. One of the things that they, the VA doesn't really provide funding anymore. They use, I guess they used to, but they don't provide the funding for the renovations anymore. But what they do is, once the building is complete, you have low-income veterans. They can provide them with vouchers. They're called HUD-DASH vouchers. And basically what that does is it supplements the rent. It pays about two-thirds of the rent and the veteran is responsible for a third of the rent. And it is for low-income veterans. Usually they have some underlying issues like mental health, maybe substance abuse, addiction, things like that that they're dealing with or have dealt with in the past. One of the issues, I did speak to the Marshville Veteran Service Officer. She, they did one. And she said, "One thing, if we do this, we would wanna, wanna look into is, you know, the property manager." And I know this is like years and years and years down the road, if it even happens. But looking to see who is managing the property. One of the issues they have with theirs is it's managed by a homeless shelter, father bills. And so they have a lot of, I don't know, I don't know how to say this. They're having some issues with some of the residents there. And so it's just a concern if, to go to, if we move forward with this, something to be aware of. The other thing is, some of the funding could be what's called SSVF. And I don't remember exactly what that acronym stands for. But they determine, they consider anyone who served in the military, even if it's just for a day, as a veteran, as long as they don't have a dishonorable discharge or a bad conduct discharge. The state of Massachusetts and the Department of Veterans Affairs definition of a veteran is very different from that. So when we're talking about veteran housing, when I say veteran and when they say a veteran, we may be talking about different people. So you may have people coming in there as veteran housing who actually can't get any additional services. They can't get VA healthcare. They can't get the Chapter 115 Financial Assistance Program because they don't meet the state or the federal definition of a veteran. But they're in veteran housing. So it's just another issue that they said, you know, to be aware of. I think, like, that's just been like a half-hour conversation today.
Okay, so Carol, for veterans, veterans housing, as a type, does it always have to have services?
So she did, not she, Noah did say that if you have a facility that has the HUD-DASH vouchers, they would like to see some kind of medical services on site, social worker services on site, even having an office for somebody like me, the VSO, whether it's a satellite office or a permanent office. So they do like to see those kind of services available on site to those veterans for any additional benefits that they may be entitled to.
Meals?
They didn't mention meals. I don't think they provide meals. I think it's more like individual apartments and people would be on their own for meals. It's more like a greenway terrace, but with additional services.
Okay. Wanna hear from Craig?
Yeah, I can't even see Craig.
Craig, he's in the back.
Craig Dutra, I got invited tonight because I'm wearing three hats. I'm a member of the Long Term Building Committee, but I am not speaking for that committee. I'm a member of the Select Board, but not here as a Select Board member. But I am here as the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. And quite candidly, we haven't really looked at, at the veterans' housing or even the reuse of the high school for other purposes than what have been discussed thus far. Part of the problem was, I think, and I, and I came into this a little bit late. I was out of town service for a while and then I jumped back in about a year ago. But, so this one had been putting along down the road for a while. But we, we sort of, we set up this whole project to look at ways the town can make use of, better use of its buildings. So the project not only covered, the one that had been done by the company out of province, included every of the major buildings in town. The Council on Aging, the Annex, the, the high school, as well as, yeah, the Council on Aging, the Annex, the high school, and
Town Hall.
Town Hall, right. And so we looked at a variety of uses. And then when it got down to the final presentation to the Select Board last week, the committee opted to move towards a, probably the more ambitious proposal was the community campus. Having said that, community campus can be broken into pieces, both structurally and, and from a planning perspective. That if you, we wanted to do it all at once or even with some combination of timing and whatnot. It's still a sixty to seventy million dollar process to do the whole thing, according to the estimate. It didn't look at, and that was one thing that I had been interested in, is potentially partnering with outside entities. I mean, I can think about, we get two fairly large, ambitious health systems, you know, existing in our region. We have the South Coast Health and we now have Brown University Medical. And, you know, could you invite them, you know, in terms of healthcare services or a type of healthcare service, to do something with that building? So now you basically have sold off, leased off, or you, but you certainly shifted the burden from one hundred percent on the Town of Westport to having another partner. And there can also be other types of partners that we could, we could engage. Except we didn't allow ourselves, and I say "we" being the town, when we structured this thing, the opportunity to do that. So I'm glad that you've, could come in a little bit and sort of reopen the broader discussion. That's the, that's the advantage of the planning entity. And, you know, and the process going forward, so that we don't get too far off track. We will be having a public hearing to discuss the report. It'll be held after Labor Day because we wanted to get that, the summertime fun out of the way. Then it would come back to the Select Board because the building is under the full Select Board. And then the Select Board would decide, would make the recommendation to the town. So if, if we were to do something that required costing any more money than we have, which is almost anything, we would, we would have to be talking about a special town meeting. We'd have to talk about some very specific proposals. I'm not convinced we're ready for that, but the timeframe that we are under is to try to get some decisions about the building, or at least recommendations for the building that would be heard in public, would be discussed in public, and would be recommended for potential action before the holidays.
Thank you. So I think part of this community campus was to be a a community center. And I think that's great. But I don't know what a community center in that division looks like. I've seen some very, very successful community centers. One in particular that is not run by the municipality, it's run by a nonprofit. And the nonprofit raised a ton of money to put in the facilities. Over time, this is over a hundred years. But it is very successful. They have like five thousand members of this community center. And they, they pay a yearly dues, like the YMCA. But they have employees that, that run the place. And I don't think it's sufficient to say that part of this building is gonna be a community center. Who's gonna run it with money? And we have no money. And I don't know how that's gonna happen. So I think that we ought to consider that as well, is that, you know, if, if we could get some large donors, which could possibly be Westport residents, to fund the upgrade of the building that would be used by the community center. I think that that's a real possibility. And again, it takes the burden of doing it from the town's finances. And I just don't see how a community center, as envisioned by the Long Term Building Committee, will be funded because it's great to have the space. But even if you spend seventy million dollars to facilitate it, how are you gonna run it? Because you're gonna need, I don't know, ten, fifteen employees to run it all the time. We have trouble hiring one time.
I think they were talking about combining everything, including the community center. The Town Hall there, everything. So I think that's probably why the Annex, Building Department, because they had so much space.
But how is a community center except for just town offices?
Oh, it's gonna be everything. When people go, you know, you'll have the Section As Council on Aging and all of the other things, because we're building so large. It'll be campus, that's what we're gonna do.
So... Did you want to say something?
I did, if I may. Thank you. My name is Aileen Moncrief and I'm the Chair of the Council on Aging. Very interested to hear you speak so openly and positively this evening. I think one of the things that we have decided on our point is to question the validity and the reliability of the use for the Council on Aging. I'll just speak to that group. No one has approached the Council on Aging on what they wish to see or how they would anticipate use in the future. Currently, we are busting at the seams. I think I've said in public, we have waiting lists for our programs. Our intent was to take a few of the educational programs, discussion groups, book groups, tech classes, exercise classes, and to use the space that is simply in the cafeteria, that large open space. That's, and as an interim use. Clearly, if we're talking about bonding or any of these types of solutions, it's gonna take several years. We'll just leave it at that. And some of us may not be participating in anything at that point. And we're realistic about that. We came up with a strategic plan for three to five years and that was it. That was, and our strategic plan says loud and clear that people wanna age in place in Westport. They wanna stay here. So housing is an issue. Recreation is an issue. What we are looking for is an annex or space to take the non-social services aspects of the Council on Aging, which is vast. It's your only social service agency and outreach group in the town. We take care of the food stamps for the elderly and many of those types of social issues, including we collaborate with the veterans. And so there's a lot of synergy. We also work with the police and the fire in terms of first responders and some who gets called first. Our social workers, our caseworkers, our outreach workers, or the police. So we worked so that the police are not always called. We're just asking, I guess, is, is that, we would like to keep the building that's on Reed Road as offices and as the private space, the interview rooms, the space that people do taxes. There's probably four to five hundred families that are assisted to do their income tax in the course of a year. I don't, for the course of the tax season, maybe not the year. Our classes, as I say, at the Council on Aging, we have waiting lists. I think we would like to know, how do we get an interim use? We have tried to say, we think we have the resources that could help with the air handling. We just need some direction. We met with the school officials, we have, that we can use the space. And so we feel like we've had a lot of stops and starts and stops and stops over whether we could use it as an interim, knowing that we're looking at maybe a few years before anything permanent is done. When it comes to the name of the community campus, that's our, that's on us. We had said, "Wouldn't it be great? We'll be in the same physical space as the young children in the after-school program." You have recreation that's going on in terms of basketball. We're just asking to use the cafeteria, the eating space. There's a few ancillary rooms off and we could do, people, I can't tell you, the people that wanna play mahjong and cards. So to perhaps set up a game room, and that, that would be it. So we really feel that what we're asking for is a space to use for educational purposes, which is one of the same, and an exercise, which is recreation, and in some instances, education. So I thank you for, we came up with the community campus because we could also, then, use the outside safely for walking, which you cannot do on Reed Road.
So Ralph said that he needs to sit down with you. And I don't know if we have anybody else that could sit down with you, like some engineer or something that scope out all this stuff. I have heard from Art and others on the, that are now on the Long Term Building Committee, who said that you don't wanna use it for kids or elderly unless it's upgraded to code.
Right, we don't consider ourselves elderly. That's why they know. We don't. I mean, in the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's sixty and older. We offer classes and programs for getting ready for retirement. So, you know, it's, it's, the Council on Aging is this required agency of the state. So it's, we're not elderly, we're not, there is a group that does meet at the Council on Aging three days a week. They are supportive day or social day. They need a lot of assistance, or some assistance. My mother was in that program more than ten years ago. It's, it's a statewide recognized program on how good it is. And I think that that's something we don't pride ourselves here in Westport, of how good our programs really are. So I'm sorry if I jumped in, but we're not elderly in the sense of the vernacular of the code group. We're busy people.
My mother-in-law, who lived in Westport for a long time, as she was getting older, and she was socially isolated because she couldn't drive and everything. And we said, "Well, why don't you go to the COA?" She said, "No, that's for old."
That's for old. We hear that all the time, it's for old people. So, really, thank you. So, well, I thank you.
Well, thank you. So I don't know, we could ask you to help coordinate between Ralph and yourself?
That would be terrific. I would look forward to that.
Because I think that's the only way that that's going to happen.
Yes.
I mean, a lot of people who are in your, one of your exercise classes.
Oh, yes.
Calls me weekly and saying, you probably know who it is.
Well, I get some of the same calls as well, like, why don't you do something?
Right.
You know, like, what if I could? And this is why I'm here tonight, so.
Well, thank you for coming.
He was one of our instructors there.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
My name's Ed Reese. I'm a fairly new member of the Long Term Use Committee. And I'm not speaking for the committee, I'm speaking for myself. The question was asked of the architect about housing and whether it's feasible. The answer was, we were limited by septic and water because of the existence of wetlands. But it is not clear to me, again, I'm new to the process, whether we actually have data. Do we know what the capacities, what the septic fields are or what the well fields are?
So you'd have to have an engineer, do a sanitary engineer to figure this out. But in a in a similar way, we did Nokotok Village, I don't know if you know where that is?
Yes.
And that's fifty housing units, fifty bedrooms, I'm not sure, fifty bedrooms. But it's 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 fairly large and it's on its own single septic system. It is a denitrifying system. It denitrifies down to ten milligrams per liter, which is low, even though the state doesn't require them to. We did. And they also combined that with a shallow, narrow drain field, which meant that they didn't have to have it popped up so high out of the thing because of the high water channel. And I believe it's been very successful. And they've had a public water supply well drilled on another part of the property. The high school has a public water supply well. I don't know what the capacity is or if it's suitable for for residential or just the limited use of a school. But I wouldn't say that that should limit.
Oh, I'm in agreement. That was a response I got when I asked, why can't we do housing? So I think some additional analysis needs to be done on that erosion. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I think I think it's really possible that you could do it there. Anybody else? Mr. Perry? No? Okay. John?
A couple of comments. I'm not on the Building Use Committee, but there are a couple of things that I am concerned about, little things in the plan, like the the floor plan shows town hall and annex with ten thousand feet and the table says we need sixteen thousand. And, you know, I'm sure that's just something that that in their planning, if we put annex and town hall there, there's going to be enough space to replicate at the minimum the existing space in town hall and annex, but it doesn't seem to show that. Or little things like putting pickleball courts next to town hall. We're going to have every employee leave or employ being driven nuts by the sound of pickleball. You you want pickleball in some other town, not near where people want to concentrate. But the main thing is this issue of housing. I've reused, I don't know, maybe a hundred buildings, lots of buildings. And it's all, the most important thing is always getting the use right because the use then determines everything. And the community campus is attractive, maybe even seductive. But I look at things like, it's sixty million dollars, people at town meetings are going to ask a lot of questions. They're going to ask questions like, did you reach out to corporations like Mark mentioned, Toll Brothers, to see if this could be reused without a substantial hit to the town budget? And if the answer is no, we didn't reach out, then there's going to be a lot of skepticism that we have the right idea. I've also seen a lot of buildings, school buildings converted to housing. And and so I know it can be done and it's very cool when it is done because you get people who went to school in a building living in the same room. And there are all kinds of stories like that. But what I'm trying to think of, whether or not it exists, is housing in the same building as a school or in the same building as town offices. And that is, I'm sure they exist somewhere, but that is, I think, a harder thing to do to have residents, whether they require social services or not, in the same building at the same time of day as schools or or that. So, and the last point I'd make is, you know, it may be that this could be funded by the town or the town supported by generous philanthropists entirely. But it's also possible that, like most projects, it it might be financed. And if it's financed, then you're looking for, where does the debt service come from? And some of the tables, I'm not sure I can understand, show, well, we're going to save this much money if we, you know, move. And so that is something that could go to debt service if if we need to borrow some money to get this done. But the the main thing I look at is, I started a performing arts center, the Zeitarian Theater. That is hard work. And is it going to pay any rent? It it's just a hard work for it to exist, let alone paying rent. And I think there are other uses like that that are wonderful uses, but they don't bring in money. And that, therefore, they can't be used to service any debt. If you look at housing, whether it's in the building or whether it's constructed new on the land, because there's a lot of land here, which we're assuming should be, you know, ball fields. Housing is the strongest market there is, not in Westport, not in Massachusetts, in the country. People are starving for housing. So I wonder why we don't spend a little more energy looking at the strongest market there is. There's no question there's a need for housing, whether it's specialized housing like veterans or whether it's an aging in place postal neighbors network kind of thing for people who want to stay in Westport. Or whether it's just general housing, but that is a very strong market. And I just wonder why we don't pay a little more attention to whether that, there's no question it's a need. I don't want to put it in competition with, yeah, we need to think about Council on Aging and Town Hall Annex and stuff like that. They're both, they're both needs, but one is a very strong market that has to draw money to build things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Can I just add on to what John is saying? I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but I think we also can do both. I mean, I, this building.
Yeah.
At a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet, it's three and a half acres of floor space. I think you could, we could partner, by partnering with a housing company like Toll Brothers, they could take seventy percent of the building, a hundred thousand square feet, develop that into housing. And whether or not it's actually still physically connected, it could be, as they proposed, taking a slice out to separate it.
Right.
That would be the housing component. And then whether, and if we enter into a long-term lease or something, that can help subsidize the town's cost to accommodate the Council on Kids and the Town Hall Annex youth, I'm looking at the program here, that is accommodating the youth after-school program and the auditorium and a performing arts space. All of that is going to take up maybe twenty-five to thirty percent at the most of that building. So all of that could be incorporated. And part of it could be done, as you suggested, Jim, through a 501(c)(3) organization, getting private funds to kick in. And in other words, you you have these layers of of ways to reach that goal of being able to to afford, to do, to meet the needs that we're trying to solve here.
Yeah, I I agree with Mark. I I think that we could do multiple things with that building and, you know, I think it really has to have a hard look, whether you want to move people from here to the town hall up there. I don't know. But back to my talk about the community center, not the community campus, because that's everything, but the community center, which would be for everybody, like, like recreational stuff, basketball, maybe a swimming pool, swimming pool, like a really good YMCA kind of place. And there's no place around here unless you want to drive all the way to Fall River to do those kinds of things. And I think you could get so much, so much input or donations to do it and also use. I think you'd get so much more use out of that as as a community center and all these facilities and people to to run it. I just don't see how the rec department here is going to do that. They don't, how many employees does the rec have, Mark? I mean, anyway, we're not the long-term building committee. I thought we'd take a moment and talk about other possibilities and give them an argument.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to bring this conversation to the committee, like a summary? And, you know, I'm going to follow up with Ms. Eileen and Ralph to coordinate that meeting, but what other, like, kind of?
Sure. And I would say additionally, we appreciate all that they're done, but they weren't tasked with overriding other issues. And I think that we need to think about that because it's a huge town asset and we just don't want... Let's be cut.
I'll provide, like, a memo.
Okay. So next would be Route 88, Southern.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Route 88, Sullivan Solar, file number eighteen dash oh-one-one S P dash S dash S B A dash L I D. Review six site visit memos from SW Cole.
Yep, that's me. Let me just grab my paper. So this Route 88, Sullivan Solar, they're just making weekly site visits. So yes, I have six to go through. You have them in your packets as well. These are pretty simple, so, you know, I'm just going to kind of go through them. I I myself have not seen the site since June. So the first, the first report from June twenty-third to June twenty-seventh, so they've completed the drainage structures, including the retention pond, and the materials placements and grades are to plan. And then they, he's included photos of the site being organized, drainage structures and gravel retention from June twenty-seventh. The second report is from June thirtieth to July second. The job is well-organized and well-kept. Excavation of the retention pond and drainage structures has begun. And they've included generic pictures of the site organized from July second. The third report, from July third to July eleventh, excavation of the retention pond and drainage structures continues. The job is well-organized, well-kept. Pictures of excavation from the eleventh of July are included. Moving on to the fourth review, this is from July fourteenth to July seventeenth, excavation of the retention pond and the placement of the drainage structures have been completed. All drainage structures and materials have been placed in accordance to the plan. Three culvert structures have been delivered to the site as long, as well as trailer loads of dense pack. I think that's like dense gravel pack. Once again, the job site is organized, well-kept, and he's included pics of the site being organized as well as pics of the dense pack from seven seventeen. The fifth report, from July twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, so now they've begun site prep of the southwest corner of the rear array field. Surface boulders from that area are being processed into twelve-to-eighteen inch rip wrap for onsite use. And then the front array field access road is laid out and being prepared with a layer of dense pack. They've got pics of the surface boulders and site prep from the twenty-third of July. Now, the final report, this is from July twenty-eighth, bringing us to August first. Site prep and grading of that southwest corner of the rear array is complete. The front and rear field twelve, twelve-foot access drives are staked out and laid out to plan with compacted dense grade gravel. Four box culverts and multiple pallets of rack screws were delivered. And then they've included pics of those pallets, the roadways and grading, and the pouring of the dense gravel from the first of August. We have, I haven't received the seventh update and I'm assuming seventh and eighth are going to come in together. Sometimes he sends them in kind of in a lump. And then there were some concerns about the gully in the southwest corner from the conservation agent, but he had a discussion with the developers and they worked up the grading to not, to be like in compliance with what Chris thinks is best for the site. The gully just has like a high-water table, basically, and they were going to level it out a bit. So they just talked to Chris and got the okay, so.
Are we paying coal by the photographs?
Yeah.
Good weather every day.
They're paying coal, so.
Nice, bright pictures.
I think the report is great.
Yeah, it looks good. Okay. Next, Marcot Drive, file number twenty-five dash oh-two C dash M O D, construction sample and construction estimate review.
Yes, so on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, I met with developers Gary Michael from Bristol Pacific, Paul Carrick from Bristol Pacific, Arnie Olivera from, I think, Self-Employed Arnie Construction, Greg Nicholas, South Coast Engineering, Derek Mello, one of our representatives for the peer consultant from SW Cole, and then Austin Conchina and Chris Gonzalez from our highway department, to have a pre-construction meeting from Marcot. We identified the engineer being Greg Nicholas, the contractor point of contact being Gary Michael, and the peer inspector being Derek Mello. The conditions of approval that were laid out on the decision were reviewed. These were related to the one-time inspection of the fire tank and vegetative trimming. And a particular note about the HOA, which I And, um, a particular note about the HOA, which I would like to discuss. So, there is an HOA homeowners association to be established. The developer will maintain the road until over fifty percent of the lots are sold. Then the road becomes the HOA's responsibility. Now, there was a quick issue or kind of point of discussion is that, you know, they're intending to submit this road to the town for acceptance. So, it was communicated that until the town accepts the road, road maintenance is to be worked out between the developer and the HOA. Post-acceptance, the town won't maintain drainage or anything that isn't part of the road layout. So, maintaining the HOA was recommended. Um, road acceptance and homeowners association are not mutually exclusive. Um, and like I said, that there, it is intended for this road to become public probably in twenty twenty-seven. So, we also discussed that they should complete the road to, um, town specifications.
So, I don't think our bylaws or regulations that, uh, require an HOA say that it's only in effect until or unless the town accepts the roadway.
Um, no, yeah, there's no, there's nothing like that. They were a little confused because they wanted to accept it and they were like, there was a condition of approval about an HOA maintaining the road, and they were a little curious as to how is this going to play out if they want to maintain, if they want, sorry, if they want to submit the road. So, um, what I had communicated to them is that they're not mutually exclusive and that we recommend keeping the HOA because if they do accept the town-
Not recommend, we require.
Oh, required. I'll tell, I can, I can follow up with them and say-
So, the HOA would continue to be required to exist even when the town, if it accepts the road, accepts the road? Because it's not just the road that you need an HOA for.
Right.
Multiple drainage basins that the HOA will have to meet too.
If you require them to meet, maybe they'll meet and know their neighbors.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Which could be a good thing.
Could be.
So, I, I can communicate to them that it's not recommended, but a requirement.
That's what they have to.
Yeah. I'll double-check my language on that. Um, lastly, so regarding like a surety, um, for this development, they'd like to retain the existing Form F covenant, which was filed with the registry on May sixth of this year, Book one eighty-nine, page nine, which restricts the sale of the lots until the road is complete. So, they're thinking of laying the asphalt in November. So, they're thinking of dissolving that covenant in exchange for a cash surety at that time. Um, and we can, um, identify what kind of cash surety would be.
We'll have to get an estimate.
Yes, so Derek has given a twenty-five percent estimate of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, but that can be, um, adjusted. The construction schedule is attached, which gives like a project estimate as well at the end.
They started construction this weekend?
Yeah, yep, they started in April.
They started construction this weekend, and, uh, the, the fence that was installed adjacent to where Marcot Drive will intersect with Drift Road has been taken down. That's something the highway department had addressed with the homeowner a couple of weeks ago, and it's subsequently been taken down.
Okay, the vegetation too, I saw your, your note on that, but it's, there's a lot of stuff in that triangle.
Yeah, I don't know if the vegetation has been trimmed, but I did ask them to make sure that the homeowner was aware that-
On both sides, not just, not just the way they've put up the fence.
And that it's the responsibility of the developer to do that, not the, the highway department? But I just wanted them, while they were having that discussion with the homeowner, to make sure that she's aware.
And yes, as Michael mentioned, they started construction just recently on eight-four. The construction schedule is attached. He made a great chart, so I'm sure you were able to glance through it. It's a little lengthy, and at the very end is the construction estimate, which was estimated to be five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. So, they're still in, or they've just started week two, erosion control.
Okay, um, we did Mello's land, uh, this is four ninety-three American Legion Highway, file number twenty-five dash oh one one S B A, proposed for our site plan staff review.
Good evening, Phil Smith, Civil Engineering Concepts. Property is located at four ninety-three. It's owned by Alan Jennifer Nagira. The, it's an existing, single-family residence on the property, existing garage. And there is a, uh, Nagiras own a paving company. And what they like to do is construct a seventeen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot building in order to keep some of their equipment inside, keep it out of the weather, protect it. Um, the large portion of the property is, is asphalt. Um, we're de-placing the proposed building over asphalt, so we're not increasing any of the runoff coming off of the property. Uh, we're a hundred and sixty-four feet from, um, American Legion Highway, so we're quite a distance setback. So, uh, there should be no, and it's, and it's set behind the existing garage, so visually there should be, um, minimal impact. Um, we talked about lighting, uh, no special lighting plan. But if they did put lighting, it would be downward on the building and not be directed towards American Legion Highway. Um, we've designated some parking spaces to meet the zoning. Um, the, the Nagiras run the property, they have a couple of employees, and, um, that's it in a nutshell.
How do the vehicles access the shed from which side? Do they go through the garage, or do they?
They, they will come around this way or this, the, the, uh, that would be the south end of the building. And there'll be, there'll be some doors in here too.
So, that's not a property line?
No, the property line, it's an eight-acre parcel.
Yeah.
And the property line is much larger, yeah. That, that's just the offset line, a hundred and fifty-seven feet from that eastern boundary.
So, they go in the southern?
Yeah, they, they, they may, they may end up with some doors here as well. And, um, there's very few, the owners have their vehicles associated with their, their operation here. That's current parking, and then we, we did provide some, uh, right now, there's, there's additional, you know, parking of equipment and whatnot coming in and out of the property. We'd like to clean it up a little bit and-
And all that existing pavement exists now?
Yes, that's correct. There, there are, well, the pavement limit is right up in here. And then this is field, this is some grass up in here. Uh, but the, much of that, all the area that we're impacting is, is asphalt now.
So, how big is the asphalt coverage?
I don't have that number calculated.
Yes.
I would guess on the eight-acre parcel, you're probably close to acre and a half. That's, that's, that's a, that's, you know, pull out of the air. I could get you that number if, if you'd be-
A lot of asphalt. So, but they're in the asphalt business, right? So, do you know when they did this?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, when they paved all this?
Uh, looking at the shape that it's in, it's been there for quite a while. I don't know exactly what year that might have been.
And then, that's a retention pond or?
No, there's actually some fill piles with, uh, some asphalt that's removed when they do a driveway or do a parking lot. They do have a, uh, permit from, from conservation for that. Um, there is one that's pretty close to an off-site wetland down here that, uh, we would try and have them clean up a little bit and get that further from the, from the wetlands.
So, all that pavement drains into the wetland?
All drains ultimately this, this one, yes, south, southeast.
And this is on the south side of American Legion Highway?
That's correct. Uh, Jim Long's, uh, storage, the storage facility annex is here. McAdie Lane is up, up over here. Uh, is it Sanford Road that's, that's over?
So, eighty-eight is just off to the left?
No.
No, no, it's, it's still a little ways, way to eighty-eight.
It's a hill.
Yeah, it's, it's several hundred feet east of Sanford Road.
Yeah, east of Sanford, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's way up there. West end.
I, I think it was all paved like that before we bought it, that's an existing garage. They kind of just moved and started using it and spending more time. Can't really see it because of the stockpile's moving in front, so it's all vacuuming.
So, this is west of the metal recycling place or east?
Yeah, uh, but it's east of the recycling, yes. So, I guess it, uh, okay. Yeah, we've got Sanford here, McAdie Court is over here, um, Long's, uh, storage facility and whatnot is over, over here.
I'm working on it.
It's up there in the package.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's twisted.
There you go, Jim.
Okay. Players, what say you?
Okay, so, I've read it, a staff review. It's quite lengthy, so I'm just going to provide a summary of that. Context, new garage with four additional parking spaces is proposed on existing impervious surface. So, this, um, project meets the minimum law area and frontage requirements, two seventy-nine feet over eight acres. Front, rear, and side setbacks requirements are met. Um, the proposed parking, in my opinion, has adequate access lane width of at least twenty-four feet and is more than five feet from roads and property lines. Um, the parking space requirements also meets the one-point-five spaces per thousand-square-foot threshold and one space for two employees, threshold met with two employees listed. Um, the building height and gross square area is also appropriately scaled and fits in with the neighborhood. Um, erosion control measures are proposed, a compost filter sock and removed soil is to be replaced with loman hydro seed. Um, they also are going to, like, wet, um, the soil during construction so it doesn't, um-
Dust, dust control.
Dust control, yeah, and erode more. Um, in terms of stormwater management, so no new, new impervious surface is proposed. Water is going to sheet flow over the natural site contours and drain towards the southern wetland complex. In terms of landscaping, no new landscaping was proposed. The garage will be shielded, um, via the setback and also the existing garage in front of it. In terms of lighting, there was no lighting plan submitted, but the applicant has stated that downlights will be used. And parking and vehicular circulation is adequate with the looped laneway that fluctuates between that twenty-four and forty feet, um, of width. But there was no pedestrian connection or access considered. When it comes to the technical review, the board of health, the conservation commission, and the fire department did not, um, express any comments. Neither did the zoning board of fields, appeals, pardon me. No waivers were requested. In terms of staff findings, I thought maybe pedestrian circulation and connections could be provided within the parking area to the entry to the garage. Just because I couldn't see the, I wasn't sure where the garage entrances were. And then in terms of conditions of approval, I listed one, but I, I got a review from MBL right before the meeting started, so I ended up writing down actually three more that I'll, I'll share with the board. I thought one condition of approval is just that lighting could be required to be downlights. The second one being that, and this is totally up to the board, a sidewalk or pedestrian connection could be installed in the proposed new parking area for the proposed garage. Um, just because that area looked, just because it's such a wide laneway, it, it, it looked a little complicated to me. Um, number three, any changes to the site plan requires them to come again before the board, um, and the project should be carried out in accordance with the submitted site plan, just because there were a few discrepancies between the application and the site plan. Um, and number four, a condition of approval could be that, um, the applicant worked with the conservation commission. Um, this is from MBL's comment. If the removal of the soil pile is too close to the approximate wetlands, um, at the minimum, erosion controls around the pile should be proposed during construction. And that, that last condition was per, um, uh, review from MBL, so. And I can forward that to you too.
Appreciate that. In terms of the pedestrian access, it's really-
It's just stupid, right?
The, to employees and their equipment. Anybody, any customers would not be coming to them, they would be coming to them. So, you don't have the general public that's utilizing the property. So, I'd ask that we not require sidewalks and pedestrian access.
I think that's fair.
I think that's fair too, yeah.
Mr. Chair, this, um, I'm a little confused. Is there a question before us? What, 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 what do, is, 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 is there a question? Does this require a site plan review or do?
It does. It requires a minor site plan review. And so, they're asking for approval of-
What's the, what's your recommendation?
I, I recommend, um, approval of this site plan with, um, the three conditions of approval stated, which I can restate for the motion.
Okay, um, comments first?
Well, I will move that, and you want to state the three, uh, conditions?
Sample conditions of approval include that lighting, um, shall be all downlights. Uh, number two, any changes to the site plan will require to, a hearing before the planning board and that the project should be carried out in accordance with the submitted site plan. And number three, that the applicant, um, confirmed with the conservation commission and, uh, sorry, worked with the conservation commission, um, on the removal of the soil pile to at minimum, um, implement erosion controls around the pile during construction.
So, I move we approve the, uh, site plan based on the planner's recommendation and the three conditions that they laid out.
Uh, second.
Any discussion? All those in the chamber?
Aye.
Aye.
So, this doesn't require a public hearing?
It does not, because it's a minor segment.
Thank you very much.
And who waived?
Uh, next, zoning enforcement at one thirty-eight Sodom Road, clearing over forty thousand square feet of land without lower impact development.
Yeah, this is basically just what it is, but if you go drive down Sodom Road, um, in between Charlotte White and Route one seventy-seven, um, the, uh, if you're going northbound, you may notice on the right side of the road, there's an area that's been cleared. It is going to be cleared for residential development. They cleared over forty thousand square feet, so kind of like with the Mello's Way situation, they just have to come before the board for low-impact moment approval. So, they've been given notice and, and provided guidance on how to move forward in the process.
Have they been given a season's period?
They were, yeah.
By route?
Yep.
Is this for just single-family develop, redevelopment, or is it multifamily?
They want to, I think, do a single-family home and maybe an additional single-family home and then an accessory dwelling unit or something like that. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Want me to lock or?
They would have to do, they were told that if they want to get an additional single-family home on there, that they'd need to file a Form A as well.
He's got the frontage?
Yeah, he does. I think it's right at three hundred feet to do it.
Okay, uh, next would be the planners' reports.
Yeah, I'll be quick with this. So, we submitted two applications to the, um, Mass DOT Local Early Actionable Planning Program. So, some background on what this program is. In July, the state announced a one-million-dollar program to support early-stage designs um, for municipal transportation projects. We don't have a town engineer, as you all know, and so this is an area where when we go to apply for different grants, we need help with that initial conceptualizing various projects. And so, um, especially when we're trying- And so, especially when we're trying to go for, like I said, with grant funds or try to get something on the tip or submit for complete streets funding. The awards are anticipated to be twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand per project, so pretty small-scale projects, but it'd be helpful to move some things forward.
Do you have a project in mind?
I, I do, I do, I consulted with the Highway Department and we submitted two different applications. One for the, out of Westport, to work on some traffic calming design in the area. There's a lot of speeding, we had serpent out there over the summer and motorists are typically driving over the speed limit many ten miles per hour over or, or more. In some instances, they even had someone clocked going like eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Through there, so, um, yeah, there's a.
No challenge.
Yeah, right, there's a lot of speeding. Um, but that area and then one for Sanford Road to start work on designing the shared use path. That was planned for in the Westport Complete Streets Plan, which was the top priority in that plan. So that's the two. For that, for the SNAP Technical Assistance Program, Dia helped, helped prepare this application. We submitted one application to this to get technical assistance from SNAP to assess the marsh island conditions, we had talked about this in a previous meeting. What we'll be doing with that, if they select the project, is to identify risks associated with the marsh island loss, as well as come up with some conceptual nature-based solutions to slow the degradation of those marshes. We would also like for them to give a feasibility assessment to include things like a cost assessment, just so we can consider whether or not moving forward with thin layer placement on those would be a cost-effective, uh, uh, funding request. Then moving to the Mass Federal Matching Funds, we, and this one, Mari May, who's one of your colleagues on the Infrastructure Oversight Committee, he was working with some of our elected representatives to align some federal match funds and we got a letter, a commitment letter from Governor Healy's office that the Commonwealth is going to commit two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the town as a match on the congressionally-directed spending grant that we had received sponsorship from Representative Keating's office. So that's good news and along with that, we also received notice from Keating's office that the town was sponsored in, for an FY twenty-six congressional-directed spending for the water project up near Route six and that was included. And in the federal budget that was just approved. So this is a one-million-dollar, ninety-two-thousand award that would go towards the, go towards the water project. I'm sure we will again look into the Mass Federal Match Fund for that, to get the match for that grant. Uh, we didn't know that Keating's office had submitted this for us this year because we had applied last year, but it's a nice surprise.
So you have both years? You have both two years?
There was a gap in between one.
Skipped a year.
Yeah, yeah, but.
So how, how much money in total have we gotten for the water?
Uh, with the Mass Federal Matching Funds, over two million. Well, and then with the EPA grant for the PFAS remediation, probably close to five million.
And how much do we need?
Well, I, I think to do the, the back-humber loop, that, that's all been funded. So I think we'll have to find other places for these additional resources.
So we can expand. I think, I think they're going down Route six.
I don't, I, I don't know.
So they're putting something in Route six now, eighteen-inch pipe, is that going underneath?
That was called.
That's, that's to go under Breton Cheese Brook.
That's what I thought.
So it's, it's the piece that goes in the, the old aqueduct.
In, in the aqueduct?
Yes.
So they're sliding it in?
They're sliding it in and then it gets, it gets set in, in a slowly. And then, and then when the state highway project comes and they do over Breton Cheese Brook, it's already encapsulated inside the old aqueduct. So we don't have to relocate, the state would not have to relocate our water main, which is already below the, the aqueduct runs below Breton Cheese Brook.
So is this pipe the water system or is the water system go inside? I mean, is that pipe the water pipe?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's the, the water main is running in the old aqueduct pipe.
And an update on our online permitting, plannings, the planning board's online permitting went live last month and next in the process, actually today, the Conservation Commission just went live. So next would be the Board of Health. We need to, to down me, Dia, and Nadine to come up with a process just to guide people through how to submit a planning board application on the portal and what that'll look like with the checks that we have now, where people would normally bring something into the office and we'd refuse it if it's not complete, we'll have to do that online now. So I'll just have, we'll need a document to guide people through the process as they get familiar with it.
Does this connect to the new website, which goes live this week?
It's a separate, it's a separate platform, we'll be able to link to it, obviously, through the, from the website, but it's a, it's a whole different interface from that.
Did you talk about the congressionally-directed spending?
Yeah, mhm. And that's it.
Okay, minutes. Mr. Chair, I've read the minutes for July fifteenth. And I think they're as usual excellent, really comprehensive, accurate, well-laid out. It's got all the attendant documents, et cetera, so I move approval of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I second that motion.
Any comments, that is? All those in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Next meeting is August twenty-ninth?
Twenty-sixth.
Six, twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth is a Friday evening. Oh, that's how it goes. One motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.